Okay, so I guess that's my go ahead. Welcome, everybody, to the January 5th, 2021 eWeb meeting. We are going to start off with an agenda check. Is there anybody that has anything they would like to add or say about the agenda? Doesn't look like it. Okay, I'll assume that's no. And we're about to go right into the oath of office for our new commissioners, but I want to go ahead and welcome our new commissioners. We have two new members to our board momentarily tonight. So I just want to welcome Matt McCray and John Borowski. And again, congratulate Sonia for winning another term. But now we'll head over to the oath of office.
I'm Beth Forrest from the City Manager's Office, and I will be administering the oaths of office. I will call each one of you, and we'll begin with Matt McCray. So Matt, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Matt McCray.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of Eugene Water and Electric Board Commissioner.
Faithfully perform the duties of Eugene Water and Electric Board Commissioner.
For the City of Eugene.
For the City of Eugene.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
And this I do affirm, under pains and penalties of perjury.
And this I do affirm, under pains and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now move to John Borowski.
Hello.
Hi, John, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, John Borowski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of Eugene Water and Electric Board Commissioner.
Faithfully. Say that again, sorry.
Faithfully perform the duties of Eugene Water and Electric Board Commissioner.
Faithfully perform the duties of Eugene Water and Electric Board Commissioner.
For the City of Eugene.
For the City of Eugene.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
And this I do swear, so help me God.
And this I do swear, so help me God.
And now we will ask Sonia Carlson to please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Sonia Carlson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of Eugene Water and Electric Board Commissioner.
Faithfully perform the duties of Eugene Water and Electric Board Commissioner.
For the City of Eugene.
For the City of Eugene.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
And this I do affirm, under pains and penalties of perjury.
And this I do affirm, under pains and penalties of perjury.
Thank you, and congratulations to you.
Thank you. I feel like there should be clapping. There's no clapping in this. I'm clapping. Welcome, new board members. Excited to have you.
I hope this doesn't feel any anticlimactic for the new board members, but it's a very important step. So, welcome. Great, we can move right along to Agenda Item Number Three, since we're now a full board here. And that is items from board members and the General Manager. So I'm wondering if John Brown, if you have anything that you would like to say.
First, yeah, Happy New Year to everybody, and I'd like to welcome John, Matt, and Sonia back. Welcome, it's gonna be fun. Just a few things. I read that there's a two-year study to de-energize Cougar, Detroit, and one other dam in the Willamette Basin. And I don't know how that's going to affect our resource adequacy and everything else. And if Frank could maybe get back to me on that, because I think that study's been funded. And then just also a couple of things. Some of you know that we put in a new substation in Holden Creek. And as a result of that, we were going to vacate 16 miles of a pretty significant right-of-way or do something with it. And I was just wondering the status of that, and also the status of the acquisition in the new substation that we worked on for a couple of years on 52nd Highbanks near Warehouser. Just kind of an update on some of that. So other than that, I didn't do anything for eWeb, but had a great COVID day. Thank you.
Great, Sonia.
Well, welcome, Happy New Year. Very excited to have a fresh start and a whole new board. Really excited to work with all of you. And I also did not do very much, other than constituent work here and there, I didn't have a lot of eWeb meetings over the last month. So I'll keep it short.
Great. So Commissioner McCray, is there anything that you would like to say, add, or ask?
Nothing from me, thanks.
Great, and Commissioner Borowski.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just like to say thank you to the staff. Both Matt and myself have been getting quite a bit of orientation over the last few months and have been. It's been really exciting. We got to go up and tour Carmen Smith. And yesterday, we toured Hayden Bridge. We've been basically doing round robins through all of the different departments. Staff has been very generous with their time and their knowledge. So I just wanted to mention that and say thank you to staff. Look forward to learning more as my tenure on the board continues. But the orientation has been very, very interesting and enlightening. So thank you again to staff.
Great. Well, I just want to say welcome again. I know this is an interesting way to start a new board with two new board members and to do it via Zoom. So something that I'm hoping that we can do this year is have a board retreat. We had one a couple of years ago. We didn't have one last year. I know we'd have to do it via Zoom, but it just might be a nice way to kind of get to know each other a little bit more. And I'm wondering if other people are interested in that too, because I don't want to push that idea if other people aren't interested. But it would just be a way for us as a board to connect. So yeah, show me with thumbs up, some sideways, some down. Okay, great. So I think Ann can help us figure out how to do that. And hopefully, we can schedule that easier because we're going to be on Zoom than if we were trying to figure out something in person. The only eWeb-related thing that I have is that I met with the President of the Subboard and the President-elect, along with Steve Matal, just to do a little introduction, because I know that Steve has been meeting semi-regularly with the President of Sub. So we just had a chat and talked about continuing those meetings. And that is it. Frank, how about you?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Congratulations to Commissioner McCray and Commissioner Carlson, and also Commissioner Borowski. Welcome, it's nice to have you onboard. I really was hoping that someone would say, "State your name", after she said, "I, state your name". I was really just kind of waiting for that moment. But I just have a few timely updates. I've been trying to keep the board appraised as we go forward on where we are relative to a few COVID things. So first of all, at year-end, our disconnect orders, which is something we've been tracking, as well as our 30- to 60-day payment aging numbers. Both of those have returned to approximately pre-COVID levels. Active disconnect orders are now hovering somewhere between 350 and 500, while the 30- to 60-day aging is somewhere between $1 and $1.5 million. It bounces up and down within those ranges. But those are roughly ranges that we were seeing before COVID started hitting us last March. Secondly, for the first month in several, eWeb fully subscribed our ECC customer care applications on Monday at the first of the month, about 580 customers. It's been a number of months since we've fully subscribed. Beginning of the year, people get another shot at it. And so, fully subscribed effective on Monday. And so, as you recall, we hold back a few of those for some of the people who, for disability purposes, can't actually get through to us. So that's another item I wanted to update the board on. And we are continuing to see some depression in electricity consumption. It was about 1.8% at the retail level. Non-weather-related, weather plays a role in that, but when we filter that out, about 1.8% lower than we would typically expect because of sort of COVID economy. The total year-to-date last year is going to be about a little over 3%, 3.2% or so decline. So it's recovered a little bit over the last few months. At one point, we were seeing between 4% and 5%. So it's recovered a little bit. Finally, in December, I have some good news. eWeb and the other owners of the MGP site did receive the Certificate of Completion from the DEQ, stating that the parties have satisfactorily completed the site cleanup and remediation requirements of the consent judgment. You know, thanks to the eWeb environmental and property teams for really many years of work negotiating those agreements and getting that work done. And so that's a pretty significant milestone that'll help us with the City of Eugene sale as well. So those are my updates. Welcome aboard, everybody. 2021's got to be a good year, I can just feel it. Maybe because of, you know, low expectations from 2020, but looking forward to it. Thank you, Commissioner Schlossberg.
Great, thank you, Frank. Okay, so Ann, are all of our guests for public testimony, public input here?
Yes, they are.
Okay, great. So we're going to move on to Item Number Four, which is public inputs. And so when your name is called, remember to unmute your call. You can press *6 if you're calling from a landline, or simply use the unmute button if calling from your cellphone or computer. Please state your name and optionally your address or ward, and speak clearly. Each speaker will be offered three minutes to present their testimony. Please keep track of time. We're going to help you with that too. Ann has a little clock that's going to help us, and we'll let you know when your time has elapsed. After all testimony is heard, each Commissioner will have an opportunity to speak if they choose, although by policy, we do not engage in a back-and-forth dialogue. Please note that a failure of a Commissioner to speak shall not be construed as support of or opposition to any speaker's testimony. If a question is presented by a speaker and the board does not provide an answer, an eWeb staff member will contact the speaker so that the question can be addressed at a later time. So the public testimony for this meeting is now open. Gavel in. And we have three people queued up. First, we have Jim New, followed by Sandra Bishop, and then Stephen Anderson. And then we have additional testimony of Jenny Bennett that will be read by Joe Harwood. So Jim, you are up first, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Commissioners, my name is Jim New. I live in Ward Seven. I'd like to congratulate and welcome Commissioners Borowski, Carlson, and McCray to the board. I thank you all for your commitment to public service. With the new year upon us, we all have aspirations, and I hope you'll consider these goals for eWeb in 2021. Decarbonization equals electrification, but it also means divestment. The best way to get off of fossil fuels is to not patronize corporations that are contributors of carbon major projects. There are other banking institutions besides US Bank that have cleaner portfolios and can meet eWeb's needs. Many municipalities nationwide, including Eugene, have diversified from dirty banking institutions. Rooftop and community solar and wind energy should be implemented into eWeb's energy sourcing to mitigate the expected lack of hydropower due to climate change effects on the lack of snowpack. Resiliency should be built into the system through local solar and battery storage. The eWeb net metering policy for surplus domestically-generated solar electricity should be evaluated for parity on price sold equal to price generated. Monthly net metering should be changed to an annual, and commercial per meter limit to grid should be raised from 25 kW to 200 kW. Communication between the city and eWeb should be increased to create a local solar plan that would bring all Lane County utilities and local solar companies to have regular work sessions on how to increase and incentivize energy produced from local solar. Considering Lane County is implementing a climate action plan, the Lane County Board of Commissioners and the County Climate Advisory Committee should be part of these discussions. The eWeb electrification impact analysis report should be presented at the work session, and a directed plan of action should be discussed and formulated. Lastly, eWeb watershed is subject to impaired quality and quantity due to short timber rotation harvests on private timber monoculture plantations. Clearcuts thrive soils and their ability to hold moisture for 15 to 20 years before a canopy can provide shade. This reduces evapotranspiration. Increasing early snow melt increases flooding, leading to water turbidity, requiring more water filtration, costing utilities and the consumers. As the provider of drinking water for Lane County residents, eWeb stewardship and the Oregon Climate Action Plan discussion is imperative on smart forest management practices that improve carbon sequestration and protects our watershed sourcing. Thank you for eWeb's continued commitment to a healthy environment and for listening. I look forward to another productive year from this board and eWeb staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next up, we have Sandra Bishop.
Hello, good evening. This is Sandra. Am I on, Ann?
Yep, you're on.
Okay, great, thanks. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to address the board this evening. I'm here to speak with you about the water tank project on the hill above 40th and Patterson Street in Eugene. My home is in Ward Eight, adjacent to the site. My name, for the record, is Sandra Bishop. I'm here to ask that the board, being a newly constituted board with two new members, that the board put their full attention on the specifics and details of the location of the first tank on this very important project. There is no question that we need the water storage. That's not the issue here. The issue here is the location of the first tank. So please look carefully at this situation. Specifically, I hope that the new board, especially the new board members coming on, will look and get, look at the situation and get more factual information and studies from the staff on what, if any difference, it would make to the project if the first tank was located slightly to the west of the preliminary siting. So right now, there's a tank site one and a tank site two. So what I'm asking is that you need to make sure that you have all of the background and all of the comparison between those two sites. And I think once you have that, you'll see the efficacy and the wisdom of locating the first tank, which needs to be built right away, locating that in what's being called Site Two, because I know the other tank's coming along maybe in 10 years. So this is a large property. It's 10.74 acres. And so there's room to maneuver on it. So we're not asking, we're not trying to set up an either-or situation. And I want to push back a little bit on staff. I just saw a letter recently where staff is talking about recommendations from the Oregon Department of Wildlife, Fish and Wildlife, you know, using ODFW to rationalize the siting of the first tank. That's crazy. They have no jurisdiction over eWeb. You guys do a good job, but you really need to look at this. Do the math, do the calculations. How much carbon is being sequestered in the grove of trees that are slated to be clearcut for Site One? We're looking at that. And then you're looking at Site Two with a lot fewer trees would need to be removed from that to build the first tank. So really, look at this. You're talking, you know, you've got people testifying about decarbonization. Please don't just pretend like this is not a major carbon issue, because it is. So thank you, and I'm sure you'll look at it. Congratulations to Matt and to Commissioner Borowski. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Next up, we have Stephen Anderson.
I'm here.
Great, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep, can hear you just fine.
Great. Well, I want to congratulate the new board members and returning members as well. And I am with Friends of Patterson Hill, the same project that Sandra Bishop just talked about. I am in the same Region Eight. I would especially like to invite the Commissioners on a walkabout so they can see what we are talking about, because I don't think that's really happened. I think they've been shown the site by present board members, but I don't think they realize what we're going to lose if we cite Tank One on the present site that the engineers have fixed. And it looks to me like the engineers were told to cite two tanks, and they went one and two, just looking at elevations. I don't believe they did a walkabout at all. And Tank Site Two is the obvious place for the first tank, because you're in a hurry. And it is going to be easier to build. There's no impediment at all to building on that site first. The impediment to Tank Site One, as it presently stands, is you're going to cut 260 trees, 160 of which are on Tank Site One. Some of them are older than Eugene. It's some fabulous habitat. We do not want to lose that one day earlier than we need to. Engineers solve these problems all the time. And in canvassing my neighborhood, no one, nobody wants to lose that old growth now. So we're asking our voices to be heard. COVID has made it impossible for the public to actually know what's happening. And I guess what I want to know is how many comments are you getting about people wanting to move the tank sightings? And what's next? Are we going to go to court? Are we going to do civil disobedience? I can't really get any clear answers. So that's what I'm after. I would love to show the new board members especially what we're about to lose. We have affiliated woodpeckers that depend on big timber. And we've got it here. This site is, well, this is called an eWeb legacy site. And I think the legacy needs to be that we build the tank in the saddle and save the old growth as long as we can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So last up, we have public input reading by Joe Harwood on behalf of Jenny Bennett.
Thank you. Jenny Bennett lives in John Brown's Ward, which is Ward Five. Hi, my name is Jenny Bennett. I'm a Senior Vice President at Summit Bank. I'd like to thank the eWeb Board of Commissioners for keeping some of eWeb's deposit dollars locally at Summit. This was an initiative that was undertaken by your board three years ago. Summit is a local business bank headquartered in Eugene. All of our banking decisions are made here. Our 75 Eugene-based colleagues work downtown. Almost all of our team resides in Eugene and are eWeb customers. The dollars that are deposited into Summit Bank are invested right back into the Eugene community. The money on deposit from eWeb has allowed us the opportunity to lend approximately 75% of your dollars back into small- to medium-sized loans for business owners in Eugene. For example, this year, your deposits allowed us to make over 350 Eugene-based Paycheck Protection Program loans totaling nearly $100 million, which allowed local employers to retain thousands of workers. As our bank continues to grow, these deposit dollars also enable us to hire additional colleagues who either currently reside here or who are moving to Eugene and are future eWeb customers. The impact on our community is significant. On behalf of all my colleagues at Summit, thank you for going local and investing in our bank. We are incredibly thankful. We appreciate all the work US Commissioners do for our community.
Great, thank you. So we have no other speakers. So the public testimony for this meeting is now closed. And at this time, Commissioners are given the opportunity to comment if they so choose. So I can't see everybody's pictures, but I guess you can go ahead, any of the Commissioners, if you would like to respond.
Sonia's here. I don't know, I can't see everybody either.
Yeah, go ahead, Sonia.
Okay. Well, I wanted to thank everybody for the testimony this evening. I think there were some comments made last time about banking. Jim, I really appreciate you bringing that up. And I know a number of years ago, we did direct Frank and the team to make more of the investments local. And I think that they went forward and did what they could. But my understanding is there's others, there's certain rules and requirements on where our funds have to be that limit what kinds of institutions. So I think we've tried to max out what we can. And Frank, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, if there's more that we can do there, I would be personally supportive of trying to put more towards our local banks and support our local community more. But I do understand that there are certain fiduciary responsibilities and requirements based on us being a utility that sometimes we can't get out of. And also, sometimes the banks themselves can only also take a certain amount from us. That's that piece on the water issue. I mean, I personally had the opportunity with a number of the other Commissioners that were here at the time, a number of months ago, to go up and walk through the site and talk with staff and really drill them on whether or not we could actually cite the water plant or the water storage tank on the other location. And again, and again, and again, we've come back to it will lose more trees if we cite it in the location that is being suggested. So I mean, I really fully do trust staff. I think they are doing everything in their power. I mean, if they could make a magical situation that made everybody happy, wouldn't that be wonderful? Sometimes that's not the case. And that's really unfortunate. You either put it in this location, and it's right next to your homes. And I know that that's very frustrating, and it's going to be a big impact. I personally also have a site that's going to be put in, and it's going to have an impact. That's part of development in the area. Now, what we want to do at eWeb as a public utility is make sure that the impacts that we're making on the community are as thoughtful as possible. And because we're a public utility, we do look out for the environment. We look out for the rate pairs. We're trying to make the best decisions possible. And I do have faith that the staff are doing that, especially after the walkthrough that I went through. And if Matt and John, if they've not had that opportunity, I would love to go back up there and do that with them again to see the site and ask more questions. But at this point, unless Frank has any other information, I mean, my understanding is that it will cost more of those old-growth trees that we don't want to cut down if we have to take up the other site first. And that's not what we want to do. And that's not what I want to do. So I'm just, I'm putting that out there. If there's other information that you need that's not being put out there, please let us know what that information specifically is. But, um, my understanding is there's a very good website out there, and there's been lots of opportunities, uh, for Zoom meetings and public input in that regard, that it's not, uh, that they've been trying to do what we can during this time to really make that a clear process. And so I do appreciate your, um, your understanding during the COVID time. We are not trying to hide anything at all. And I, I mean, when we even, when we talked about this before COVID hit, um, our main concerns as a, as a commission was to make sure that the community had the input and felt like they were brought along and brought into the fold on what we were doing there. This is a public process. So, you know, I'm, I, I don't know where else we can go right now, given, um, our current, uh, COVID situation. But I mean, if we need to have more Zoom meetings, maybe that's something we can do. But other than that, I don't know that there's, um, much else that we can offer at this time. So, those are my comments. Thank you again for being involved in the process. Um, it does, it does make, you know, make us think about, uh, where we're going, and I, I hear you. But I also have only heard from you two, um, from, from Steve and Sandra Bishop, uh, for the last five board meetings. And I don't think we've heard, I, I personally haven't heard from anybody else in the neighborhood about it. So, you know, I, you're beating the drum, but I'm not hearing it from anybody else. So, that's my two cents. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sonia.
Yeah.
John Brown, is there anything that you would like to, to add?
Uh, no, I think Sonia said it all and said it very well. Thank you, Sonia, for doing that. But, uh, I thank everybody for public testimony, and we take it seriously. But, uh, to kind of reiterate what, uh, Mr. Carlson said, uh, we, we look at the macro on things like this. We have the, the best engineers, I think, that we can, we can have, and designers and things. And we're very, we're probably the most, uh, responsible organization I've ever been associated with about the environment and doing the right thing. And, you know, this is urban facility. This is urban location. This isn't a park. Um, and we have to, uh, you know, we have to make some tough decisions. Uh, the city of Eugene had to put a, a main fire station right next to the only condominium ever developed downtown. And, you know, it, it is what it is. It's, it's an urban facility. It has to serve more than just immediate areas. So, um, I, I know what your frustrations are, but, uh, I'm going to listen to all, everything, all the input and make, make a decision. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, John Borowski, is there anything that you'd like to say?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the people coming out and testifying. I always, uh, enjoy this. As somebody who's stood on that side of the microphone, I know that how, how challenging it can be. Matt and myself did have the chance to go up and tour the property, um, earlier on, uh, last year, the end of last year. And myself, when I was talking to staff, uh, I kind of brought up the fact that I'm fairly familiar with some land use issues that go on in the city of Eugene, being the City of Eugene Planning Commissioner prior to my, uh, tenure here. Actually, I'm still a planning commissioner for a few more months. Um, and I know that there are area plans that are specific to that piece of property. Uh, the South Hills plan is, is, governs the land use on that area. Now, the EWEB got a, a waiver or basically to not have to comply with all, all of the compliance issues of the South Hill study. But I specifically asked staff, are you doing everything you can to adhere to the South Hill studies, even though you're not bound by that study? And they said that they are using that plan to the best of their abilities to, uh, move that project forward. So that made me feel good. Uh, I do understand the, the apprehension of cutting those big trees. They're beautiful, and they're, uh, they're a very nice amenity to the, to the neighborhood. So with that being said, I'm going to learn more about this as my, as time goes on. The other thing I would like to say is thanks to Jenny Bennett and, uh, the Summit Bank people. Uh, she mentioned the fact that those funds were leveraged to help local small businesses get, uh, Paycheck Protection Program loans. I personally can speak to the fact that, uh, my businesses did receive a Paycheck Protection Program loan through Summit Bank that helped to, uh, keep over 40 people employed during the pandemic. So, it was nice to see that that could happen, and that we're keeping our funds locally as much as possible. So, thank you.
Great, thanks, John. Matt, is there anything that you would like to add?
Uh, sure, thanks. I'll be quick. Sandra and Stephen, thank you for your comments. Um, I look forward to learning more about that project. As John mentioned, we did have a chance to walk the site, but, um, looking forward to hearing more and learning more about it. And, uh, and then likewise, like, want to thank Jenny Bennett for, for making comments, um, about the banking efforts that, that EWEB is making. And lastly, um, Jim, uh, thanks for your comments. You hit on a number of topics, um, that all seem valid and worth consideration. And if your comments are already written down, I wonder if you'd be willing to send them to us electronically. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Just one quick or couple of quick things for me. Um, I know that this is the second time that Jim New has mentioned about, uh, local banking. And I know, Frank, that we were given the information that Sonia referenced before, but I'm wondering if it'd be possible to get us just a list of where there are opportunities for us to switch some of our banking from some of the large corporate banks? And when, when those opportunities would arise? I know that we have some accounts maybe that have certain time limits on them, but just curious, like, what those opportunities would be?
Yeah, Commissioner Schlossberg, I, I can, I can answer that a little bit right now if you, unless you'd like to finish, and then I'll just, uh, follow up with some final statements, if you'd prefer to do it that, that way.
Just my last little quick thing was about, um, was about the water storage tanks. And I, I know that it's really tricky and that we're, we're, it's a sensitive subject because we're trying to balance, um, homeowners and ratepayers. Just, just to echo what both Sonia and John have said, um, ecological sensitivity. But I too felt, when we went out there for our site visit and just in our conversations with the staff, that they have been really thoughtful about it. And I know that they're going to make, we're going to make some decisions that some people are not going to be happy about, but I do have faith that staff is working really hard to try to balance all of those, um, all the, the tricky aspects of it. So that is all I was going to say. So Frank, if you want to, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify a couple of things. So first of all, the local banking and the large-scale banking are, are two different issues. Um, a couple of years ago, um, the board encouraged staff to invest more money locally as we could. There is a limit to that because of mitigating financial risk, um, to the utility. And so, um, we have invested what we can in, in local banks. And Summit is, is a good example of that. Separate from that, um, a few years ago, we did, um, an RFP for our banking services, which is, um, more of the larger scale, uh, sort of full services. Um, I believe we're going to go through that process again in, in, I believe it's 2022. And so there'll be another opportunity. And part of an RFP is to look at environmental attributes of those facilities or, or of those, um, institutions. Um, we moved away from Wells Fargo, uh, for a reason associated with their treatment of veterans, which was at the guidance of the board a few years ago. So, um, there will be another opportunity, I believe that's in 2022, uh, to take another look at our complete banking services, um, RFP process. So that, as far as the timing, that's what we would look at. So, um, relative to the other subjects that Jim brought up, um, there will be opportunities to look at, at, um, net metering, for example. That needs to be part of a larger discussion that I have teed up for 2022 around, uh, rate, the ratemaking, um, and rate design process. Uh, I'll go through some of that with what happens this year versus next year and, and why. And then, um, relative to the east 40 of the site, there's a, there's a few things. It's, it's actually really premature to list the number of trees, I, I think, at this point, other than just rough estimate. We are trying to reduce the, the impact on, um, the environmental impact of this project. We are expecting our final ecological study and geotechnical reports in the first quarter, and we'll do a final design layout probably early in the second quarter. You know, when we do that, we'll have a much more specific number of trees. In the meantime, I have actually also asked staff to evaluate doing both tanks. Part of that is based on more of an immediate need. Part of that is based on the fact that it's very disruptive to do, uh, two just a, a few years apart. And so we may actually end up recommending, we're going to look at the pros and cons. We're going to analyze that, um, in, in a number of detailed ways, um, as to whether we actually just do both tanks, um, either sequentially, one right after the other, or sort of semi-simultaneously. There are some opportunities to save in bidding processes and procurement and deployment and construction, um, but there's also some downside to that, too. So, um, we're going to evaluate that. But it's a little premature to count the number of trees. We have received some pieces of feedback. Um, most of that is just very general, don't clearcut the property kind of feedback. I think that that's not our intent, um, certainly, and we're trying to be as environmentally responsible, and we're trying to be as transparent as possible. We have sent 11 status update emails to neighbors. We've had a number of meetings and outreach, and we've responded to over 40 inquiries, um, directly. And so, um, this is not something we're, we're hiding behind, and I have a lot of faith in staff to make the engineering decisions. We're asking for public input relative to landscape and public amenities, but honestly, this is an engineering decision when it comes to the tank layout and the construction process. So, we're trying to keep that perspective as well. But I think I, I clarified a few things that came up relative to banking and other things. So thanks for letting me jump in.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to Board Action Item Five, the Approval of Consent Calendar A.
I'll move to adopt Consent Calendar A.
Second.
Right. Sorry, I just have to, help me with my Roberts Rules of Order. Do we have a discussion, or do we just go ahead and vote on that?
Vote on it if nobody, nobody pulled anything, is there, you know, that it's been moved in seconds, is there any discussion? If there's not, then you vote, and you tally it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, we can go ahead and vote. All those in favor of approving Consent Calendar A, raise your hand and say aye.
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 All right, that is unanimously approved. Moving on to item number six, Approval of Consent Calendar B.
Move to adopt Consent Calendar B.
Second.
All right, anybody have any discussion or things that they want to say about Consent Calendar B? No? Okay, all those in favor of approving Consent Calendar B, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Great, that was unanimously approved. We're just cruising through this meeting.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Schlossberg, I'd just like to inject one thing, because some people may wonder what, what's the purpose of Consent Calendar A and B? Consent Calendar A is generally items that we have gone through a very standardized process on. And so, this would be RFPs, uh, things that, um, we get the right number of bidders. Everything from a procurement policy perspective has been normal, and if, if one of those was not approved, we would basically have to scrap it and throw out the whole process and start over. It's, it's kind of, it's, it's almost an all or nothing kind of, of approach. Consent Calendar B are things that are things like resolutions. Um, they're, they're unique items. If, if we don't get enough bidders on an RFP, it might be in Consent Calendar B, which the question would be, well, how do you know you're being competitive that way? So, we've, we've tried to stage this in such a way that Consent Calendar A is pretty much standardized kind of process, and everything is met. And Consent Calendar B might have a few abnormalities to it. That's, that's why we structured it that way. Thank you.
Great. Okay, then we can move on to item number eight, which is the 2021 Election of Officers.
Right, I move to approve Commissioner Schlossberg as President and Commissioner John Brown as Vice President. Do you have a second?
Second. Aye, second.
Great. Um, so now, I guess, there's anybody that has anything that they feel differently about or want to have a discussion?
I, I may suggest, Mindy, you may want to ask if there are any other nominations from the floor. If not, we'll close them.
Okay, are there any other nominations from the floor? Doesn't look like it. Okay, um, so, we can go ahead and vote. This is weird that I'm leading the vote, but anyway, um, all those in favor of approving that slate, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Great, approved.
You've done such a good job. You won the opportunity to do it the rest of the year. Thank you.
Right.
Your pay adjustment.
Yeah, right, exactly. Okay, we'll just keep moving right along. Um, so the next thing we have is agenda, item number nine, and it's the Appointment of Board Liaison Assignments and Committees. And I know that at our last board meeting, everybody kind of went around and just said a little bit about what their assignments are. And this is, is the time where it's a little bit odd for the new people, just because you kind of have no idea what we're talking about or what you're signing up to do. So, um, we can just go over again what those assignments are. And, um, who is, who would like to take on those responsibilities? So I'm just going to read from the agenda is that, um, we have a representative on the Lane Council of Governments, and Sonia has been doing that. And, um, I believe, Sonia, that you're interested in continuing to do that.
I, I am interested in continuing, although if somebody else really wants that position, um, I'm, I'm open to, to stepping down if, if others are interested. I've been serving on it for the last few years, and, um, so, either way.
And Sonia, you're on the Board of ElCog now, right?
I have, for the last year, or, yeah, for the last year, I've served, um, on the Executive Committee as well. And so I, um, I'm not, it's not slated as I'm, I'll be in again this year, though I can, I could throw my hat in, um, to be elected to be on the, uh, Executive Committee again. And any others, you know, if you're interested and wanted to be in this position, um, you could do the same. So it, it does, we meet, um, the regular board meets quarterly. It's, and it's usually a couple of hours. It's, you know, it, it's the Council of Government, so it's a really great way to meet a lot of the other governmental entities, uh, in the region. Uh, we also have been typically in normal times, like once we get out of the COVID situation, um, the meetings do move around to different locations so that it, it kind of showcases the different jurisdictions a little bit more. But right now, obviously, we're all meeting on Zoom.
So, just a question for everybody, just, uh, in terms of process and how to do this. Do we want to just run through what all the things are first, or go through each and say who wants to do it?
Um, well, as a new Commissioner, I would say, uh, either would work for me. One of the questions that I have, I, going through the agenda, I noticed that there were quite a few, um, positions that had no designated alternates. And I'm just wondering if that's something that normally are filled, um, because I think that, like, for example, ElCog, you know, I, I, I really support Sonia continuing on in that position, but if there would be an opportunity for an alternate, that, that might be something that I would be interested in. And so, I was just, I was just wondering if, if in the past, there were alternates for a lot of these ones, or if it's just, it's not. So that's just a question that I had.
Um, I can speak to that from a historical perspective. Yes, there were, um, and it just became a logistics issue. Um, there have always been alternates, especially on ElCog and, um, in, in the, just a little background of the, this, the sub-lane electric and city of Eugene liaisons are, are new. Um, those, and, uh, the only other one that's been, uh, OPEB and, uh, NWPPA are the, are the others. So, there's been, there've been backups to that. I think there would be a backup to ElCog and, uh, I think there would be a backup to ElCog and not to OPEB, it's a quarterly meeting. And maybe one, I don't know about Frank, and you have a backup to NWPPA?
No, it's, it's really an individual position. It's, it's not awarded to the utility and so there, there would not be an alternate for the NWPPA.
So it sounds like Sonia, you're interested in continuing and John Borowski, that you are potentially interested in being an alternate for that position. Does that sound, sound right? Okay, great. Okay, so the next one we have is the McKenzie watershed council and according to my or our notes here is that E-Web staff is on that and that there's no designated commissioner. Is that something that in the past has had a commissioner be part of?
Yes, we, I think we went away from a commissioner participation, what, three years ago, Frank?
I think it was a little longer than that, Commissioner Brown, but it, it has bounced back and forth, I think for the last at least three years, maybe five years, it, it has been supported by staff.
And so is there anyone who is interested in participating in that as well? Or are we good with staff?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in and say, I don't know how I do this, but I always end up on a lot of committees whenever I get involved. But I think that this, at this time with what's happened up the McKenzie, I think it's, it's fairly important that we have a commissioner on that position to help with staff. I think there's going to be a lot of things that are going to be happening in that area. So I would be willing to, to do it if nobody else wants to jump in.
I'm curious what the, how often their meetings are and what the commitment is for that.
I'll look into that. President Schlossberg, maybe I'll have staff reach out to Commissioner Borowski directly as far as where we see the, the role and the information sharing going and, and we can report back next month and either that or Commissioner Borowski can report back as well.
Great, okay.
We could potentially elect on that one to have, to have Commissioner Borowski be designated, but staff could also participate, correct? I mean, they could come and if, they could be the designated alternate as needed, right?
The, the reason that it ended up as a staff position was we were participating very actively anyway. And so it just made sense that staff was that. If there's a commissioner who would like to be involved in that and represent the board in that liaison role, then that's perfectly acceptable and beneficial to the board, but staff will be very active in the organization, especially given the, the present state of condition up the McKenzie as, as commissioners are well aware. So we will be very active in that group either way.
Great, okay. OPEB, other post-employment benefits. So that's something that Commissioner Brown is currently on and does not have a alternate? And John, I'm assuming that you want to continue on with that?
Yeah, it's, it's a non-voting position. I just, I'm, I listen and then I try and report back and it kind of get the health of the, the post-retirement benefits package. It's, you know, it's a $17 million fund and we meet quarterly, I think, isn't that, Frank? And it's, it's, I'd be more than glad to stay there. It's, it's a brilliant, it's easy and if somebody, if somebody else wants it, that's fine, but I'll do it to, to check the box. It doesn't matter to me. I've done it in the past and I was just reappointed last year and I'll stay if you'd like.
Anyone else chomping at the bit for that position? John Borowski?
I will be an alternate.
Okay, so we'll stick with John Brown for that position. So the next one is the Northwest Public Power Association and this was the big one that Dick Helgason was, he was, that was his position. And Frank, can you just give a little bit more information about that to us?
Yeah, certainly. So this is, this is a position that is an elected position through the NWPPA to the individual. There are a number of utilities. They try to balance their board with various states, various mix of general managers and board members. We have a very good relationship with NWPPA. It isn't something that's a necessity to keep the relationship healthy. There is a period of time between now and I'll say roughly May where we could appoint a temporary replacement for Commissioner, former Commissioner Helgason for, I think it's probably two or three virtual meetings if you wanted to sit through that. Not absolutely necessary, but if you were interested in, in the go-forward representation, that's something that we would need to submit a name to NWPPA by the end of January. And then that's voted on by the, the NWPPA board members. So it's, it's an individual thing. It, it meets two or maybe quarterly, two or three times a year historically and not very exciting places around the remote west unless you just have a lot of time and would really enjoy going to Spokane or Boise or seeing places like that. So yeah, it, we have a great relationship. It's not absolutely necessary, but that's kind of the lay of the land. If, if a commissioner wanted to just test the waters, there's a few meetings that you could participate in, but that takes you past the deadline to apply. So either one's, either one's an option.
And so just to be clear, during COVID times, these meetings are obviously via Zoom, but during regular times, you actually go to the meetings and there's, it, it takes, it takes a big chunk of your time. I remember that was one of the issues of finding a replacement for that.
Yeah, usually they're two or three days and to, I, I won't quote Commissioner Helgason, our former Commissioner Helgason on the, the amount of density in those two or three days. I'll refrain from comment.
And how, how big of a deal would it be if we don't have somebody on that?
It is, it is not a big deal at all. We leverage NWPPA significantly for their training. We also work with them closely on legislative positions. They pass resolutions around certain issues, for example, that we work with them on. It is, it is not a big deal. We, we have a, a good working relationship. I have a good relationship with the executive director. So it is, it is not at all an issue that would reflect poorly on E-Web.
Okay, with all that information, is there anybody that is interested in exploring that position?
I don't think I sold them.
But I, I just have a question about it. So obviously it's a learning curve here type of a deal. If we were to pause on this for a year, they, they take their, they take their applications in January. So we could audit, I, somebody could audit them on some Zoom meetings to see if it's something they'd be interested in. We could leave the position open for a year, but continue to maybe put in a nomination next January when some people know more about what's going on.
So, yeah, so just to be clear, Commissioner, we don't leave the position open. It's, it's filled by somebody else. So this is elected. We could at a later times submit a commissioner name for potential election into a position. And in the meantime, there are a number of meetings that I think we could audit or participate in if, if a commissioner wanted to sort of understand the lay of the land there. But the position will be filled by somebody other than an E-Web name. There's, there's a lot of members and a few board members and so we have representation through other utilities.
John, if I could jump in, I did it for about five years and I quit because it was, it was so time consuming. You have quarterly meetings and an annual meeting in places like Anchorage, Reno, Sacramento, Billings and in just the travel, you got to get there a day before and then the meetings are two, two or three days long and then you got to travel back. And you do the math, that, that comes up to almost 20 business days or a month of your time and it just got to be too much to do. And that's, I would caution you if you, you know, keep that in mind because we go back to real meetings, there's, there, they ask that you be present at the meetings.
We could arrange, I'll just be specific, we could arrange if a commissioner has a future interest that we could arrange for some audits of meetings.
There is, there is the potential for somebody to participate in the Zoom meetings and just let it run out. We could appoint somebody to fill Dick Helgason's role for just the next few months while we have Zoom and then that expires. And then if that person was interesting, throwing their hat back in come next January, then they could do that.
Yeah, they, that's an option as well. So if someone would want to participate in the next couple of meetings between now and May, then this, this would be the time, the time to identify that person.
And they're still all day, I mean, it's, it's all day meeting for, you know, the Zoom meeting for it, too.
Right. Other than the walk your dog breaks at noon, but you know, basically it's all day.
So you've all made this sound like a really attractive appointment. Is there anybody who would like it? Looks like not at this time. Okay, so we'll revisit this next year or at some other time.
Very good.
So next we have Springfield, Springfield Utility Board. John Brown, you still are a liaison with them, is that right?
Yeah, I'd say Frank and I have been working on the AWS site and the swap, the property swap and all of that. We've had numerous meetings and I think that may be coming to a sunset if that's, if I'm not correct, but we still have the, the interaction of trying to explore maybe a joint venture on, on the Willamette facility. Even though we're not going to do one on the McKenzie facility, I'm more than glad to stay in that position unless somebody else wants it.
And don't worry, Matt and John Borowski, we'll, we'll have a chance again next year. It's not like these positions are, are lifetime appointments, so there, there will be other things that open up. And speaking of that, the next one, Lane Electric Cooperative. I believe that Steve Matal was, he was meeting with them occasionally, but I don't know how active that, that position has been. Maybe you know, Frank?
Yeah, that was not a very active liaison role. I, I think there's, there could be more opportunities over the next year or two with Lane Electric, in particular around things to do up the McKenzie Valley, you know, interconnection of systems, potentially even looking at, at territory exchanges and things like that. So I think, you know, again, I have a good relationship with the general manager, Debbie Wilson, but it would be good to have a board level relationship, either through the presidency or through an appointed liaison. I think that, that will become more helpful over the next year or two.
So I'm happy to do that as board president this year, but again, if there's somebody else that has like a burning desire or really wants to, that's okay, too. Okay, so that will be me.
And just point real quick, we do, I think we do have to vote on all of these. So I'll have to go through and do the list. Okay, just want to double check.
Okay. Okay, and the last one is the City of Eugene for Climate Related Matters. So that's a new one that just started in the last year or so and it's been, I've been the liaison along with the board president, but now that I'll be board president, there's room for somebody else to join me as a liaison and we get together quarterly and just talk about things that we have in common related to mostly to the climate action plan, but also just it's a good chance to, to chat about things that we have going on together.
I'd be happy to step into that alternate or support role.
Great, so just to be clear, it's, it's like, there's two of us together, so it's not alternate, it's, yeah, you, you would be a participant.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, so I think that is all. Do I need to go back and read what all of those are or do we just go ahead and vote?
President, I think it's pretty clear through the, through the tape or the notes as to what the, what the motion would entail, just as discussed, I think would cover it so you don't have to go back through it all again.
Okay, and did I leave anything out? I think I got them all.
I'd move that we adopt the 2021 board liaison assignments and committees as previously discussed.
Second.
Great, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, okay. We have those done, great. Okay, so next we're going to move on to general business items and we have a scheduled five-minute break. We are running ahead of schedule and we have less than an hour left on our agenda. So I'm wondering, do people want to take a five-minute break or do you want to just push on through? So give me a thumbs up if you want a five-minute break. Okay, so we will take a five-minute break at 6:36, so we will come back at 6:41. Okay, so we will take a five minute break. It's 6:36, so we will come back at 6:41. All right, it is 6:41. Give everybody another, oh, here we start coming back now. Great. All right. Can't see everyone to see if John Brown is back. Yes, okay.
So Commissioner, or sorry, President Schlossberg, and just from a navigation perspective, if you click on any of the pictures down below, it'll bring up all the pictures and you can toggle back and forth. So that way you can see if, you can keep track of, of your fellow commissioners that way.
Got it. Thank you. I feel like I've mastered Zoom at this point, but not Microsoft Teams. Okay, so we are on Agenda Item Number 11, the 2021 Organizational Goals and Performance Measures. So Frank, this is you.
So President Schlossberg, Commissioners, good evening. Thank you. For the audio record, this is Frank Lawson, General Manager. You received a background memo on the proposed organizational goals. These goals are presented consistent with policy, but also as one of the contributing criteria of the general manager's annual performance evaluation. I believe that I'm accountable to you for the organization's performance and I'd like to provide some context on the goals as we've submitted for 2021. Go ahead with the next slide, please. So the first goal can be paraphrased, which is, you know, run the utilities like you're supposed to. With additional emphasis this year on workforce resiliency. We've done a really good job of financial resiliency, building infrastructure that's resilient. And this will involve leadership and management development, workforce mobility and enhancing our flexibility and bench strength. So we're really trying to run the organization consistent with policy, regulations, resolutions. There are more than 40 active resolutions at this time and our values. So similar to previous years, we have a number of measures and report the results of this quarterly using at least 40 different metrics or measurements. And this year we'll include some very specific reports as we go on, on base level reservoir projects, for example, customer self-service and billing improvements, also known as the customer experience improvement, and also Carmen Smith and things like that, unless they're actually covered under a separate goal. So we, a number of different measurements that we will report quarterly to the board that basically we are running the utility like you have expected of us and are directing us to do so. The second goal is about substantially completing the commissioning of the AMI project. And this is really from a cash register perspective and in preparation for future data analytical based new products and services. But we're really, this is about scaling up. We, this last year put in some additional communications infrastructure, worked on processes, and now it's really time to start accelerating the deployment for some, some really just very fundamental purposes, really the meter to cash kind of perspective. There's, there's, as you know, lots of strategic benefits to AMI, but we need to scale up and we need to do it starting simple and then expanding. The third goal provides you with the opportunity to understand, develop and provide some long-term direction to the utility. I think this is especially important in the three of you did not participate in the development of the last strategic plan revision. And so this will provide some opportunity to look at some of the long-term issues and opportunities facing the utility as we go forward. Next slide, please. This fourth goal recognizes that the board and management have a lot of work to do to provide guidance to the utility. While this goal presents issues related to strategy, many need some tactical direction and some key, on some key and timely issues. Compared to what I would really refer to in 2020 as a pretty benign work year for the board, there wasn't a lot of a long-term strategic tactical guidance that was, and discussions that were taking place. This goal places a much heavier burden on the board in 2021 and in fact for 2022, because I, a lot of these, I tried to give you some background in the, in the memo that would lead, that there's, there's more coming relative to providing and aligning the utility. So for 2021, we'll work with you on drinking water source protection, for example, lower McKenzie hydro projects. The information system plan, which is really focused on business continuity. I think like a lot of our other infrastructure, we need, we have assets in our IS and information systems that, that need some significant replenishment. We'll work on fire mitigation and also looking at a multi-year cost of service analysis, which is really a prerequisite to the strategic discussions in 2022 around future rate design. And, and future rate design is probably one of the most important things I think this board can really tackle in the next couple of years. It's, it's that fundamental. So when people talk about just something as simple as we are going to be agnostic to your generation resource. If someone wants to put in a sewer system, that's fine. Right now we are not agnostic to that decision. Or do, or do we want to provide a cross subsidy for that? These are just fundamental decisions that, that need to take place in the next couple of years around new products and services. And do we, what direction does the board want to go with that? So very, very fundamental, a lot of work here in 20, you know, after 2021 being, I'll say from a board perspective, probably a little bit boring to lots of things from a board perspective now in 2021 and 2022. So a little bit apologies to the new commissioners, drinking from a fire hose is probably gonna, the dial is gonna get, the valve is gonna be opened up a little bit more than, than might have been sort of our typical run rate. The, you know, next slide, please. And, and finally, Goal Five captures work around an issue that of community interest. It represents some groundwork needed for E-Web's future electricity generation resource decisions. As you may recall, E-Web will need to make decisions impacting roughly 85% of our present electricity resources by 2028. And so understanding the impacts and the modeling on the consumption side is, is half of that equation. Both of those changing and will change dynamically going forward. So this is kind of a next step of a continued work that started last year, but it's, it's fundamental base work. So next slide. So as a reminder, we, we don't just state our annual goals, we really work toward their achievement and provide regular quarterly feedback to the board and to the public. And yes, this is personal to me as well. I am accountable to you for the organization's performance. It's a mix of keeping the lights on and the water flowing and the data flowing and the money flowing and also strategically positioning the utility for the future. And so the goals represent a combination of, of both operations as well as strategic positioning. Next slide, please. And so Commissioners, what we would prefer this evening is to get approval on these organizational goals. So we can launch right into their immediate full pursuit, either as proposed or as suggested or through comment or edit. If that's not possible tonight, then we will make modifications and propose approval at next month's meeting. But I'll, I'll give, give you a little bit of feedback. It wasn't, I think, two or three years ago that we typically got our annual goals to the board in about April. And so really feel like the organization's come a long way in the last couple of years. And not only to go into the year saying, here's what we'd really like to accomplish, aligning that with what you would like to accomplish, which is part of the policy, but doing it immediately and then tying that and holding me and the rest of the organization accountable. So that's, that's what we're proposing this evening. And a motion is roughly sketched out there, but at this point, President Schlossberg, I would be happy to turn it back to you and the rest of the board for any final questions or comments. I think that's probably the next slide. So thank you for the opportunity to provide some context and be happy to, to listen to comments at this point.
All right. Thank you for that. So we can go ahead and open it up. If there's anyone who wants to jump in, I can just call on people randomly. But if you want to raise your hand, I can, now that I know how to see all of you, I can see you. Yes, John Borowski.
Thanks. Well, it does look like a very ambitious year ahead. I think what would be helpful for me is to, in the future, kind of put some, some dates next to some of these, you know, it's like, okay, we wanna, we wanna tack, I'm, I'm looking at the annual goals. You know, we want to tackle this one in January, February, March, you know, just, just a timeline on this would be helpful for me to help figure out where we're at. And then one thing that I didn't see in the annual goals, and I, I'm, I'm not advocating for adding it to it, but I think that with what we've seen with the pandemic and the way that the organ, all organizations have staffed and, and the, the changing to the workforce, the work at home and how that is impacting the organization, I think is something also that needs to be at least looked at in the coming years. How has the workplace changed and, and going forward? Is that something that is going to be implemented throughout the organization going forward? I'm talking work at home, I'm talking about telecommuting, I'm talking about are we going to lose valuable employees that can do this work in a market that can pay them more than we might be able to pay them here? I just see that that's something that we're going to want to keep our eye on and it's not in the annual goal. It really didn't really raise its, its head until the last half of this year. So that was just something that I would, I would want to not necessarily add to it, but just put, have our finger on that pulse of the workforce and how COVID and this new technology is going to affect the organization going forward.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Borowski. I, I will add that part of that emphasis statement on the first goal around workforce resiliency is geared toward that particular subject. So it's, it isn't just about telecommuting, that's, that's a piece of it. There's technological pieces to it. There are also opportunities in it from a recruiting, there's risks because you might lose employees to a, a larger market. But there's also the opportunities to recruit the other way as well. And so that's what we tried to capture when we talked about workforce mobility and resiliency was that we want to take the opportunities that were created in 2020. Because really, if you, if you take a step back and say, there were a lot of really great lessons learned for us as an organization in 2020, how do we leverage that going forward? You know, work at home, workforce mobility, flexibility of staff, remote work also, not, not just from an office perspective, but from a field perspective, those are all inclusive of that goal. So I think that while it's somewhat broadly stated, you will see a lot of analysis and, and measurements associated with that. Separately, I didn't provide it in the, in the memo, but we do have milestones for these objectives. So some of them are Q1 or Q3 or Q4, and I'd be happy to share that with the board prior to the next meeting. So you have a little feel for when we might be looking to have some of these conversations and, and where some of these deadlines would fall.
John Brown.
Thank you. I generally in agreement with everything we have here. I do have a question about Goal Four though, Frank, because several of those things in there are very expensive or could potentially be very expensive and they're short term. I mean, you know, Leaver, Walterville, I think it's, and watershed recovery are, are very short term and they're not the longer term things that all the other things are. And are we going to be able to analyze the economic impacts of, on, on rates on both water and electric because of trying to implement, implement those things in a shorter term need?
Yeah, those, that'll be part of the conversation, Commissioner Brown. I, I think it's, it, it, it's part of the decision process. If, we, we don't want the board to be in a position where you're making decisions not understanding the full impact of those decisions. And which means what's the impact on the long-term financial plan? What's the impact on rates? Borrowing capacity, what's the environmental impacts, what's the social, and all, all those are important. There are some of those decisions that are more pressing in, in time than others. The, the ideal scenario would be that you would develop this wonderful, very in-depth, highly visionary strategic plan. And then you would go and all your decisions would align with that strategic plan. You know, unfortunately, other than if you started up a company from scratch, and it still doesn't work that way because you're usually scrambling to get the company off the ground, the timing issue is one where we're going to have to make some strategic assumptions when we make some of these or, or the timing is, is such that we need to make these decisions sooner rather than later. But we'll do that with the broadest scope and impact analysis that we can to help the board make those.
Okay. Sonia.
Great. Well, I, I too want to echo this, this is a, a lot to take in. We have, we have our work cut out for us. I'm excited. Many of the things that I would expect are in here. I'm, after this last year and I'm, I'm more antsy on the Willamette Drinking Water Treatment Plan, which I see is coming in 2022. So, you know, I'm, I guess I'm a little bit disappointed to not see that moved up a little bit. I understand that with COVID and we want to make that partnership. We want to play that out and see if we can do something there with SUB and that has probably been put on hold more than we would like with COVID and all the other things that are pulling our attention away. At the same time, at some point, really do, do you need to think about, are they going to come to the table or not? And I, I don't know, I, I may want to see some more pressure there, but I do appreciate that it's still on here. And given all the other work that we have to do, I understand why it's there. But I'm going to be a big proponent of let's get that moving in 2022 then and right away.
Yeah, Commissioners, it's a great point. The reason that it got pushed to 2022, and I, and I say pushed, it's, it's not that we're not going to be working on some things relative to that. It had less to do with SUB than it did the fact that there's a lot of turnover in the Springfield City Council. We need to get the land use options understood and clarified one way or the other. Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, let's, let's figure that out. So that when we come back to the board, we have some of the uncertainty and unknowns at, at least stabilized. That, that stabilization is what we're going to be working on in 2021 so that we can align with the board around the exact go-forward plan in 2022. It's, it's, it had less to do with SUB than it did some of the other issues that we need to solidify.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. In terms of some of the other items, you know, I, I am curious where In terms of some of the other items, you know, I, I am curious where in your vision projects like the, the water storage plant, the, the water, water storage facilities and, you know, dealing with the headquarters building, where that falls in these groups? Because I see those as some of the, the big items that we've started and need to conclude. And I, I don't see exactly where they stand. So if you can.
Yeah, because the, many of those are, I, I would say sort of within, so the projects, for example, tend to be within kind of our traditional capital management pieces. There's three projects in particular that we will highlight more than others. One of them is the reservoir projects. One is Carmen Smith relicensing, and one is the customer improvement project that's around customer self-service and others. All the others are still visible. Headquarters, I wouldn't say is necessarily sort of utility strategic, but it is significant enough that it will be part of that land and property discussion. Those are all contained within this run the utility. Goal number one. They're there because they, they, they aren't so much, they aren't really strategic shifts. They are more in, in the normal things that you might expect us to be talking about on a regular basis. So that's, that's where those reside.
I mean, to that extent, then the advanced metering portion, I mean, we had made that decision to, to implement that infrastructure. Why is that a strategic initiative still?
Yeah, that we, we actually had that debate internally. Does that just roll into a project inside of goal one versus pulling it out? Some of this, I'll, I'll tell you specifically with that one, I pulled that out separately for two reasons. One of them was I think it's a fundamental technology that's going to be important to develop consumption flexibility that we're going to need in the future. So it's very strategic, it's much more, we're, we're not doing this for operational improvements. This is, this is, it's a strategic thing by itself. And secondly, and I don't know that this is just a, a utility thing. We, utilities are not very good at managing sort of cross-functional, large-scale, information-based projects like this. And I thought it, it deserved its own attention. Just, just to put a little pressure on us to, to do it and to get it done. So one of them was kind of an internal reason and one of them was a very sort of strategic reason.
Okay.
We had, yeah, we did have the exact debate that you're talking about was why wasn't this included in the others? Why was this pulled out separately? And that's, that's the reason.
Okay. All right. Well, otherwise, I'm very supportive of this plan. And I mean, again, so many items on here, we really have our work cut out for us, but appreciate the effort.
My apologies in advance. I feel, I feel a little bit guilty because honestly, 2020 was so odd. And, and I just can imagine from a board perspective, it was just, let us do something significant. Well, it's, it's all going to come at you in the next year or two, specifically, probably more than any other period that I can think of in recent history. This board is going to be very busy, really working on some challenging, you know, highly impactful, multi-generational kinds of decisions. So I, I look forward to that.
I was going to comment that this will probably be our shortest meeting of the year. So new board members, you know, don't, don't get used to this.
All right, Matt.
Thanks. Yeah, a lot of focus on goal number four, and I just have a few questions. And I, I agree, this is quite the, quite the, the list of, of actions to work on here. I assume the goal is to have these all wrapped up by the end of this calendar year, just in general. Okay. And then, and then you may have said what COSA is on, on number, on E there, but if you did, I missed it. Can you remind me?
Yeah, it stands for cost of service analysis.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. And then in terms of timing, there's only one here and that's item D that seems like there's some time sensitivity to it, to the extent that there are mitigation actions that are just policy decisions. It seems like we probably want to have those done by the time the fire season picks up again in this year. And so it, it might be useful to indicate that here or just to, I mean, I'm sure that's on front of mind for you. It's just the only one that to me seemed really time sensitive. I know that wildfire mitigation is on our agenda in the next coming couple of months. So I, I know you're bringing it to us. I just want to make sure we're making decisions in time for those things to be rolled out to be effective for the next fire season.
Right. That's a great point. There's, there's a few key milestones relative to the wildfire mitigation. One is kind of early in the year, giving the board a feel for kind of what our best practice is, sort of what our state of condition is at this point. We would like to have a, a plan formalized before fire season, but also recognizing there's some, some work going on in the legislature that could potentially require a filing with the Oregon PUC, maybe by the end of the year. So we want to make sure we're, we'll, we'll probably be ahead of that. But to your point, we want to have a, a really solid board-approved plan in place before fire season hits us. And so that's, that's built into our kind of milestones for that one. Now, we have similar milestones on the other ones. And so some of these, for example, when I look at the information system plan around business continuity, that is something we want to get nailed down by the third quarter. And part of that is because it will, it will significantly impact future budgets, including starting in 2022's budget. So some of these, and, and as well as long-term financial plans, we want to have a really good, you know, to John Brown's point earlier, these can't be made completely in isolation. And so we want to be able to kind of stage these in a way where we're not sort of mixing the stew all together and, and, you know, over blending it. We still need to see, distinguish the vegetable, this is a bad analogy, I don't even know where I'm going with that. But we, we, we have timelines for these and a lot of those are in order to sort through this sequence with the board so that we can set ourselves up going forward. But yeah, they do have milestones with each of them.
Of course. And then the last comment I have is I, it's hard for me to imagine how we digest this much in the course of one meeting a month. And so I hope we might think about, you know, how we can allocate time effectively for us to, especially if we're weighing in with policy decisions related to these items, that we, we find some time to really do some deep dives. Or, you know, if there's other ways we do that, I don't know. But I'm sure you're thinking about how to make sure that we can digest this. The fire hose analogy is an apt one.
Yeah, I think as you, as you turn up the, the, as you open the valve, you need to look at, at different nozzles. I mean, there's, there's probably the potential to look at just various forms of communications, maybe some work sessions that are very topical and specific. Some of these will come in the natural course of, of, of a meeting, some, some will not. And, and then really trying to help the board with appropriate background as well. And so, yeah, I think we're, we're looking at this and saying that there's, there is a lot of work here. I'm having some discussions with, with fellow executives around kind of how we in some ways divide and conquer to, to really help the board and maybe probably have me and, and help the board through this even more, which means I need some help in other areas. So there, there is a lot of work here. There may be some things that we get into this and we just go, well, you know, to do this justice, we might not be able to, to do this, but maybe we could do that instead. So there, there's going to be some, some working through that. But you're absolutely right, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot to this. And so look forward to that.
Thanks.
All right. I just have a, a couple of questions. So one is about resiliency, not just workforce resiliency, but like disaster preparedness. And I know that that was a hot topic for us. And I'm wondering, is that now just that we've made enough progress on some of those like big initiatives? That that's wrapped up into just the day-to-day performance?
Yeah, I wouldn't classify it necessarily. President Schlossberg is wrapped up. I, I think that there's, there's a, sometimes you call out a goal because you want to create a, a sort of a sea shift. Could be cultural, it could be through objectives. When you look at resiliency, we've classified that in three ways. One is workforce, one is financial resiliency, and then one is through our, our infrastructure. We have made a lot of progress in some of those areas. So for example, we now have five emergency water sites. We wanted to do five in five years. We actually didn't do that, we did five in three years. And, and so there's two more that we want to do. Those are in the normal course of our emergency preparedness business. It is part of what we've said is, is important to us, it's still part of the strategy. And so the strategic direction is part of when you, when I said run the utility the way you've told us, that is part of what you've told us is important. So that's, that's why it's not necessarily called out separately, but it is in there. And, and I have a feeling that, that, so when you have a 24/7, 365 kind of product on demand, you, you have to be able to prepare to continue services independent of the kind of disruption. That is about emergency preparedness, it's about resiliency. That will be a, a really core feature of the utility in this kind of business model. So it doesn't go away, it's just absorbed into what you've already told us is important.
Great. And then my other comment is on goal number four. I think that it's both exciting that we get to work on all these things. And it's been fine if this past year has been kind of boring because the things that we've had to master is how to do virtual meetings and things like that. But it does make me a little nervous because it is so much. And I too, like Matt, I'm very supportive of having like work sessions or ways outside of the regular board meeting to digest some of this information. Because I'll only speak for myself, but since this is not my day-to-day work, if we wait a month in between meetings to really get into it, sometimes it gets, it's not as fresh as it should be, and these meetings are really long. And so I feel like it really, it really requires a lot of our attention and these are very important decisions we're making. So I just want to make sure that we give it the attention that it needs.
Yeah, part of the reason that I didn't want to get too specific with the board on, on timelines is that some of these issues, honestly, you need to take in, in bites, small bites. You, and, and so it isn't something where we're going to, to roll, roll up our sleeves and say, okay, the month of April is devoted to this. And we're going to just cram everything into April on this one subject. So we're hoping to do this in a way that kind of builds on itself. And when you understand a COSA, then you understand rate design. When you understand some, some IS infrastructure needs, you'll understand. So we're, we're going to try to do this in a way, but, but absolutely, I think there's, if, and, and part of my role this year, I think with the board is to, I, I want to make sure that we're getting good quality out of this and we're not just doing things to check a box and say, oh, we got that done. And, and so we all have to be a little bit of a quality control mechanism for each other. But I think if, if I'm feeling like we're not giving the subjects enough attention to really get some good substance out of it, I have a feeling I won't be the only one who feels that. I have, you will, we will probably feel it as well. But I think we need to be willing to raise the flag and said, hey, look, this is going a little too fast for me. And, and that's okay. Most of these timelines, while I say they're important, they're very substantial, they're generation in their generational, in some cases in their impact. I also, and I hate to quote John Brown because it gives him a little bit of an ego. But, you know, sometimes, what, what is it, John, better late than wrong, I think is what he says. You know, so sometimes that's, that's appropriate. And I think that's just something we'll have to gauge with each other.
Great. John, you had your.
I did. I'd like to say for some of you who might not be aware, when, when I first started on this board, we had two meetings a month. First one was a work session, and then we followed two weeks later with a meeting similar to this where we took action after the items of the work session. And we, we did that, and we did that for years. And then for some reasons, I think it was just because of the, we, we got pretty bogged down and buried in it. We went to one meeting a month and slimmed it down. But it's not, it's not unprecedented to have work sessions on topics such as this. And I can see, I, I don't disagree as much as meetings are sometimes challenging. I, I go back to quote Frank, better late than wrong. I, you know, if we have to have another meeting, we'll have another meeting. I think it's, it's important because these are not, I mean, these are very, very significant things we're taking on now. It's not like selling a building or building a reservoir. I mean, this, these, I mean, just looking at number four, that's, that's absolutely challenging. So I'm, I'm, if the majority wants to do that and staff can do it and Frank agrees with it, I'm not adverse to it.
Yeah, I would say one thing that would really help us commissioners is if, so historically, those meetings were on the first and the third Tuesdays in, in the evening, roughly these timeframes. If you can block out those, you know, first and third Tuesdays, I mean, we won't wait till the last minute on these, but it gives us some reasonable ability to plan around these. Because some of our biggest challenges relative to scheduling work sessions and such, such as, has been your schedules. So if, if we could agree to, you know, kind of block out the first and third Tuesday, we won't wait till the last minute, like I said. And we, we can work around vacations and summer is always a little bit different. But we can, that will definitely help us if you could do that so that we can have some opportunities to say, well, you know, this makes sense to do a second meeting in March. Let's, let's plan on a second meeting in March or, you know, whenever that looks like it's, it's going to come about.
Sonia, go ahead.
Just real quick, I, I mean, I choose second that, I'm, I'm, or third or fourth that. I, I think it is probably going to be needed to have multiple other meetings. And I will also note that especially with very, very meaty topics, doing this through Zoom and through Teams, I don't know about you all, but I'm on meetings all day long, especially Tuesdays. I mean, when we get to the ninth, 10th hour of being on another one of these meetings, you're starting to cram some of that really dense material into the end. The effectiveness is, is kind of going down. So if we need to break it up a little bit more to make sure that we're really providing that good feedback, I, I'm all for it.
I think we can definitely shoot for that because we do want good quality here. That might mean that a meeting, well, this is a 6:30 to 7:30 because that's the length of the topic and we feel like that's, that's something that we can break off and, and, and then pursue or 6:30 to 8:30 or so, you know, there's, we'll, we'll try to work within those kinds of parameters.
Great. All right. So you are looking for a motion?
It would be great to have a motion. I think John Borowski had a, had his hand up, though, President.
Yeah, ju- just real quick, you know, if we can get Beth Forrest back here to have me rescind that oath of office, I, I, I could maybe want to do that just, just in jest. But another thing to, that I would consider after Sonia's last comment about number of Zoom meetings and stuff like that is as we move on into the spring and stuff, there may be opportunities to do in-person meetings with social distancing. You know, once they say that you can have well people, we've got a big boardroom and we can sit, you know, 10 or 12 feet apart. And I, I also feel that those are more productive than sometimes than Zoom meetings. So with that, I will make a motion to approve the plan as submitted.
Do we need the language to be more specific than that?
No, that's, that's acceptable, but I think we need a second. Nope, that's, that's acceptable. I think we need a second.
Great. All right. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, commissioners. You're already behind. We'll just say it that way. It's only the fifth of the year and I, I feel like there's a, we've got a lot of work to do.
Well, I'm just going to appreciate that this is a short meeting this month, so I'm going to focus on that.
Don't get used to it, right?
Okay, so now we are kind of wrapping things up. Item number 12, correspondence and board agendas. Back to you, Frank.
Yes, thank you, President Schlossberg. Commissioners, we had one piece of correspondence. I'll just say that it was a minor edit to E-Web's board policy pertaining to executive sessions. We wanted to clarify that in those edits, we could have invited guests beyond staff and the board. These would be approved by the board president and the general manager. It, it was pretty nebulous. We did do that, I believe in December, when we had Commissioner Alex attend, and they technically were not commissioners or staff. It, it's just to clarify that. So it's, it's a minor edit. We would typically, unless you have comments at this meeting, you will see that appear on the consent calendar next month for action. And so that wa- that was really a, a pretty minor edit. It looks like John has a comment.
I, yeah, I do. Having been on a board that was somewhat contentious at points and, and we had quite a bit of dissent, giving this latitude to the board president, and, you know, present company excluded, when it says, you know, E-Web invited staff and guests, including but not limited to council consultants and commissioner elects. So that means a board president can invite their neighbor if they want, taken literally. Is that not correct?
That's correct, but you would also need the general manager to agree with that as well. So there is some check and balance. But we, we could, if you wanted to remove the but not limited to portion, we could restrict it to those categories, recognizing that, you know, there might be another case that comes up that we have to come back to the board for special approval on. If, if there's some, you know, maybe there's a, a property consultant that we need to invite, which then would not really fit into those definitions. So there's some risk with being too broad there. If you wanted to tighten it up, we could. But there is a check and balance between the, the general manager and the board president.
Yeah, I ju- I just wanted to know if the language was such that it's either/or? Because it, to me, it was, it was not decisive. It said at the discretion of the board president and, but just wanted to make sure that, I hate the wordsmith, but if, if you don't go in there and you get somebody that says, okay, well, I'm the board president, I can invite anybody I want. There's no real recourse to that. There is recourse to the general manager doing that. But if it's, if it's interpreted by you, that it has to be both people to approve who's in that executive session because we talk about some pretty sensitive things, then I'm okay with it. But I just didn't.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that that language gets tightened up, John.
Thank you.
I was going to just suggest a friendly amendment that we say at the discretion of the board, both the board president and the general manager, that are something to that effect. But if you want to do it at a later date, that's fine too, if you don't need it immediately.
Yeah, we, we don't need the exact edits today, but you should expect to see something slightly tightened up by the time it comes back next month on the consent calendar based on this feedback.
I mean, something to the fact that it's, it's specific to that topic as well.
Yes, right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. That was the only piece of correspondence. If you do have other suggestions offline, please email, email those to me and we'll make sure we get things tightened up so that by the time you take action next month, it's, it's all fixed up. From an upcoming agenda perspective, February kicks off a, a deeper dive, so to say, into the Mackenzie River with a watershed discussion and also a lower Mackenzie generation discussion. That's, that's really something that both are very timely discussions. And so you'll notice those on the agendas. And then based on the goals that, that were approved this evening, you'll start to see stuff fill in more and more by the time we get to, to next month's meeting. And I will work, of course, with the, directly with the president and vice president on the specifics of each agenda as we, as we prepare for those. But take a look at it now and enjoy it because I think it's going to be a little bit more meaty by the time you see this, see this next month. We also, I don't know if you'll notice, we, we did have an update, I believe it was in March or April. That's a placeholder for the tank project, the East 40th Tank Project. That will also be included in depth in our quarterly report. And, and if there's something in the meantime that we need to report on that project, we will do so. It really, we are expecting some formal reports. And like I said, I've asked staff to look into a number of things, including doing both tanks. We will need both tanks. And so it, you know, we're, we're evaluating the pros and cons of that. But I think that if you go back to the very beginning, we, we, we are listening, we are being transparent. We are just not necessarily providing an answer that someone is looking for. And that's, you know, that, I, I don't think that's a reason to say we're not having a, a great deal of integrity in the process that we're using. So that was all my comments on agendas and, and correspondence. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sonia.
I just had a quick question about the state of the utility address. And, and historically, we've had that in February. It looks like this has moved out to March. And it also looks like Frank would be doing that instead of the board president. And I'm just curious if that's the intention or kind of what the thought process was around that.
Yeah, it's, I, I guess I'll talk to Mindy about that. It's always, I'll, I'll be honest, it's been really awkward for the board president to do it. I would almost rather do that in March. I typically do it in, in March when I present the end of the year results. And so that's, because we, we close out the end of the year. And I think that's a really good time to take a snapshot and include it in our, sort of our year-end encapsulation. The, the board president, it's, it's always just been a little bit awkward. The timing and then really, I, I almost believe this is me reporting to you, here's the state of the utility. That seems more natural to me. But I, you know, if, if Mindy wants to get out, you know, contract with her daughter to do some writing and, and, you know, then that's okay if she'd rather do that. But it, it seemed like a duplication of effort to me. I, I'm open if, if that's not correct, but.
No, I mean, I think I ma- I mean, I personally made that comment before that it was, it was a little bit awkward to get voted in as president and then immediately have to turn around and, and give the state of the utility when you're kind of just getting your foot, getting your feeling about what you're doing as president. However, I also know in the past that that's been some, that's been a way that the board president, if they've chosen to do that, could take that information and go to, say, the city council or, or others and, and provide that report to them. Now, I haven't, I don't, I don't think that's happened since John Brown was last president. But maybe that's something that we do want to consider. I just don't, I just want to make sure that as a board, that's a decision that, that we make and we see usefulness there. So anyway, I just wanted to flag it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think we can do this too in such, you know, the, the, the one thing that I would, I would like to help the board with this year as well is I know, you know, we're in COVID times, which has restricted some of the neighborhood association meetings and some like that. But there are also versions on Zoom. And use some of that year-end information to provide some materials to the board so that, that you can feel comfortable going out and representing the utility as, you know, here's the state of the utility and, and having that kind of prepackaged. And then you can select various topics to elaborate on as, as you see fit. But I think that's something that, that would be helpful.
To, sorry, last, real quick, if you don't mind. To that point, we used to get cards that had kind of facts and figures and updates. And obviously, we haven't been in person since March, February. So we don't get that. So I, I would really appreciate that kind of information and would like to be able to reach out to some of the neighborhood associations and see if they would be interested in getting a, you know, a quick update via Zoom.
Yeah, we, we still do those topic cards. We, we just, they're in the mail. So yeah, great, great idea. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments for Frank or questions? All right, then we will move on to agenda item number 13, which is board wrap-up. And this is your chance to say anything that you didn't get a chance to say during the meeting or anything that's on your mind. So nothing from Sonia. John Borowski.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to say thank you and pay homage to the prior commissioners that were tearing, taking their seats, Commissioner Halgensen and Matal. You know, I've been watching these and auditing these meetings for the last year. And I just, you know, we, we weren't there last month to be able to chime in and, and say thank you to them for, one, setting a, a good bedrock for us to, to move forward with the utility and also to learn from them. So I just wanted to put that out there. I doubt they're watching. I'm sure that they've got better things to do on a Tuesday night now that they're not sworn in. But I just wanted to put that on the record. Dick was very helpful in, in recruiting me to, to run for this office and has, has offered to be a, a sounding board in the future. And I had real respect for him as, as well as Steve. And I just wanted to put that out there because we didn't have the chance to do that last month.
Great. Yes, Matt.
Yeah, well, John's more gracious than I am. But I'll, I'll tag on the same thing and, and say both appreciation for the, the former commissioners who just left these spots. And also, John hit the nail on the head by, by commenting on how helpful staff have been in orientation. It's been a ton of information, but really delivered really, really nicely in a way that makes it digestible. So the, the team at E-Web's definitely doing a great job bringing us on board. And last, I, just to the, all four of you, looking forward to some tough decisions ahead and looking forward to working with you all.
John.
Oh, thank you. Well, I'd, I'd like to welcome our two new commissioners and welcome back Sonia. Frank, always good to see you and all the staff. And Mindy, you did a great job. I know it's not easy herding cats and especially not being able to see the physical queue and everything. So good for you. I know it, it, at first, when you take the gavel, it's, it's challenging. But you did a great job and looking forward to working with you for the year coming up. So thank you.
Great. And then just a last word from me is that sometimes change can be hard. And we have a relatively new board. I'm including myself in that. I've only been here for two years. And both Dick and Steve had so much knowledge and a lot to add, and so we will miss them. But also that I am excited to work with all of you. I think we have a really good, strong board. And I know that we will work well together. So that is it. Frank, if there's anything last that you want to say?
No, just, I, I did want to thank staff as well for all, all the work so far with, with the new commissioners. It, it's, it's going to be even more intense going forward. And because some of these issues are really complex issues that are, that are going to tax us all, I, I feel very confident in staff management and this board. We're going to wrestle with some things that are not easy. Sometimes they're not popular, but they're incredibly important. And, and I, you know, having seen a few E-Web boards, you know, not this last one inclusive, but, and seeing other utility boards, I, I feel pretty lucky that we have a board that acts and thinks like it does, very respectful. We'll have some healthy debates. We'll probably have some minor differences of opinion along the way. And, and that's okay. I'm looking forward to that because I've seen some really bad boards as well. And I know some of you have, have been, been part of those or seen them from a distance. But I'm looking forward to working with this board. We have a lot to do and it's really, really important work. And it's, and we're, we're going to be on the leading edge in some areas. And so I look forward to that. But thank you and thanks to staff.
Great. Well, on that note, at 7:36, 14 minutes early, we will adjourn.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
All right. Thank you. Bye.